This meeting is being recorded.
In the absence of the chair, I suppose I could call the meeting to order?
I don't care, but I suspect it would be better for Ken to, or do we have vice chair?
We don't.
I had all the documents out there in front of me and when I couldn't log in, I figured I had too many windows open.
I have the minutes in front of me if you want me to just read.
If you just want to call the meeting to order.
Minutes, let's say agenda.
No, I mean the agenda, yeah.
If you want to call the meeting to order, that would be great.
Okay, I'll be very official and call the meeting to order.
Great.
Thank you.
Meeting's called to order at 4:09 PM. Someone want to move, approve, make a motion to approve the minutes from March 15th?
Okay.
Haven't even seen them.
I couldn't down, we couldn't, we had trouble downloading things, so we didn't download them, but do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, Quentin Kelson.
Okay, I'll second it though.
More second, whatever.
Okay, then I guess the minutes are accepted.
Well, we got a vote.
And, okay.
Somebody, you're unmuted.
All those in favor?
We have. I.
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 Oh, Julianne, Julianne, okay.
I, yes. And then minutes from 3:24, the special meeting.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the March 24th meeting?
Do we have anyone here who was at that meeting?
I was not.
Nope.
Ken was. But he took the minutes.
I took the minutes, so I'm not sure I can essentially approve my own work. Hey, here's Jim.
If Jim will unmute.
Know what, you can just, there's no forms, so you could just note them for the record.
Okay.
The minutes were noted for the record.
Yeah.
And then we can go down to old business, because we have nothing to talk about there.
Okay.
So, I think we need to table old business until the committee can meet again to discuss the management plans. Which brings us to new business. The application to amend the zoning regulations to establish a new mixed-use transitional zoning district. Mr. Chair, would you like me to give an introduction?
That would be very good.
Okay, great.
Here, I wasn't watching. That's what happens when you start bringing the paper and start reading it.
Yeah. Um, so, let's see. You have an application before you, I'm going to share my screen. To amend the zoning regulations to a mixed-use transit, mixed-center transitional zone. Right here is the future land use map from the Plan of Conservation and Development. And I'm gonna, it's a little bit hard to see, and we are getting a layer put on our new GIS system that will identify those areas in in the P O C D, this map, that are designated mixed-use transition. So that would be this area here. Timber Drive, you know, east or whatever, yeah, I guess that's east of, no, west of Timber Drive. And then you have the parcel that is immediately east of Cumberland Farms, that is owned by J E Shepard. And then there are a few other parcels down down in Southern Mansfield. I believe there's one here. And for the public hearing, I'm going to be working with Eric Delai to make a map. But there's also one more transitional district right just immediately north of Riverview Road. So, the applicant is proposing, as any applicant can do, to create, so just to back up, we have these areas designated on the future land use map of the P O C D, but we do not have any mixed-use or mixed-center transitional zoning on the books. So the applicant is proposing to to make a zoning map or make a zoning regulation amendment for this. So in your packet, I have included a copy of of their kind of revised code. They've been working on this. They've been, it's something that as with any application, they're working with staff. We do have Tyke Policy and Planning, I don't know if you know John Gaskowski, they've been hired as peer reviewers for this application. So basically, what this is, is it's a little bit of a, it's a different type of regulation, and it's more of a a form-based regulation. So if I could get my camera, my, hold on one second, let me pull it up. Okay, there we go. So it's, so basically what they're, what they're doing is they're, they're creating the zone, and what they want to have are three different types of, three different housing types. The first one would be a mixed-use building similar to what it looks like, you know, could be downtown. The second would be more of a middle residential building. And then the third would be this smaller residential building. I've pointed out to them that this one over here on the left does not read to me smaller residential, but so they're, they're, they're working on that.
Jennifer?
Yeah.
This one, this isn't the the link that was in the, in the agenda that you sent. It was the original package.
So, I sent an email out this afternoon. This is, these are definitely a work in progress. And so they have, they have since revised what they sent, and I wanted to make sure that you had the most up-to-date version. I just met with them today to go over this, this revision that they've made, so that there are some changes.
I don't think you attached the
If you.
Revised the, the agenda you showed when you were starting to screen share wasn't the one that was attached to the email you sent this afternoon.
Right, so if you click on the link, the published, that, that will be the published packet, so that's, that actually has all of the up-to-date links.
Okay, the, the old one had only two, two types of buildings and.
Right, and we've asked them for a different, a third type, yep.
So this is the third one, so, okay, I haven't seen, I haven't seen this one.
I don't, and when I clicked on the proposed zone, it didn't show up with this red line version that you're showing.
Did you click, did you click on the link? The link at the top of the packet?
Oh, no, I was, I was going into the agenda.
Yeah, so, yeah, click on the, sorry, the, that's when you're using this new software, we can upload things. It doesn't change the agenda per se, but we can add new attachments, and I had sent out an email saying that things were delineated with an asterisk, but I'm sure that that was probably confusing, so apologies for that.
Yeah, I didn't see any asterisks.
Didn't confuse me, I missed it completely.
I was, I was thinking a new garden bed, so. When the email came.
Let's see here. Okay, so the intent of this regulation is to, to have different things like so instead of having your traditional setbacks, it's, they have different things like where things exist related to the street and things like what's another example here? Setbacks would be different if you're in a zone that's less restrictive and there's a house, or you're looking at slope, the setbacks would be different. Whereas in traditional zoning, you've got like a, you know, 50 yard side yard setback and a, you know, a 75 foot rear yard setback. So this is just a little bit different, but I think the reason why Jim convened this meeting was that he wanted to have folks look at the open space component, Jim, or what is, what was your?
Yeah, that was my, my concern, reading it, that it's almost like there's no open in the case where it's down, they're saying anything larger than 225 square feet with a dimension of if, of least, so, size dimension 15 feet. I saw that as not worth, or we shouldn't call it open space. You know, just to make it clear, that's basically a place to pile snow. And the other thing that I saw was, there's no, they talk about trails and mixed-use trails in turn to the parcel with no requirement about connections. The neighborhood features and destinations.
It's down here. So, well, so I don't make you all dizzy, why don't I start where the open space is?
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry for making, for doing this. Okay, here we go. So.
Those were the two things that caught my eye. That, you know, did we really want them to even mention open space in this density, or does it something very generic? Now, item 2D. You know, minimum area 225 square feet with no dimension less than 15 feet.
I, I can't see that anything that is, I, I can't see that they wouldn't be able to, with this definition, be able to count anything that isn't under a building or under a street as part of their open space commitment.
Right. I have talked with them about this, that was one of my comments that I did convey to them today. And because this isn't a, you know, a mixed-center transitional zone, obviously, it's not going to be like our rural conservation areas where, you know, we've gotten up to 40% open space for, associated with a subdivision. I mean, we're, we're, we are specifically, we, we looked at those areas in the Plan of Conservation and Development to designate growth there, right? But that said, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't ask, we shouldn't have some open space, but the open space may be different, it may be in the form of you know, pedestrian-friendly paths, or even, even sidewalks, places where people can gather outside their home. So I, and I did want them to add some sort of context to this, I asked them to add a paragraph so that we could understand what they were talking about, because this, to me, it's hard to read. But I think if you have those specific comments, you should put them down for the record, so that the planning and zoning commission hears them.
Well, yeah, I guess the thing is, is one thing, one comment I would make would be perhaps if they're going to call it open space, it ought to at least be permeable in its surface covering. There's nothing that, that says it can't be a paved patio with this definition.
That's right.
And near as I can tell, if they're only, if they're specifying that they're going to have 15% of the total site area, but they're going to allow themselves to count all the wetlands and unbuildable ledge. By the time they allocate their, their proposed side and rear buffer zones, they'll make their 15% without any amenities within the development itself that serve the people of that development.
I did refer them to the community amenity sections in all the PB zones and as well as the DMR, the Design Multi-Family Residential. So I asked them to look at that, to see how they might incorporate some of those elements into this type of regulation.
If they want. Sorry. If they want to call it outdoor space or something, I wouldn't object. But we have enough confusion with the term open spaces it is. You, you know, in the general public's eye, they have different ideas of open space. We think of in terms of forces and fields.
Right.
And I see almost nothing in their their item two that looks like open space, right? 15 feet by 15 feet is 225 square feet.
That's the size of my living room.
Yeah.
That's why I was thinking, many of us have living rooms that size. Or bigger.
And so I object to their using the term open space and following with these definitions.
That's a really good point. To call it something different, and, and to follow up with that and Ken's point. You know, a volleyball court, right, with sand could be fall under this definition of open space. And if, if that's okay, I think the term outdoor space is much more comprehensive.
Yeah, perhaps, perhaps the term that could be used would be common-use outdoor space.
Sounds good.
In, in the DMR and mixed-use zones, we call it community amenities, so could it be outdoor space and community amenities? Or do we want it to be specifically? What, what was it, that you said, Ken?
I just said common-use outdoor space. I, I think your idea of counting pedestrian corridors is good. And I don't know if that counts as a community amenity as opposed to the kind of things that were being proposed for the recent high-density developments we've looked at.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that maybe to, if we use community amenities elsewhere in the regulations, it might make for a little bit of consistency. I don't know how different this is from the where, where that term is used elsewhere in the regulations. There's no, now five minute time to really get to know them.
Yeah, well, I think it depends on what's included in the term community amenity, whether it includes things like pedestrian bike trails. And, and I think the, the issue would be, we want to make sure that it's, it isn't just the snowshells and the front yard being counted.
Right. I keep going back, is, is it like private outdoor, outdoor space, public outdoor space and community amenities? Something like that?
Well, I guess private outdoor space could be a fenced backyard.
Right, yep, but that's an important part of a neighborhood.
Well, no, what makes it a neighborhood is when your, your your kids play together in a backyard.
True, yep.
Or on the turnaround at the cul-de-sac.
Yep. That's, yeah, that's good.
Yeah, my.
Yeah, I would, I would argue again for my, my common use being an important part of this rather than private use.
Yeah.
Not necessarily have to be public use. Inviting people to come in from outside the neighborhood. But it needs to be commonly accessible to people within the neighborhood.
It's outdoor and common-use space?
Yeah, think of the, think of the tennis courts up at Stores Heights.
Yeah. That's a good, that's a good point, I like that.
Yeah, because if, if we put private space in here, then potentially individual balconies, right? They'd be open, right? And that would count, which I don't think we want.
No.
I mean, was their intention that these small pieces actually be a part of their open space dedication?
I don't think they thought it through. My general impression of the original submittal was it was pretty shoddy. And thin.
Yeah, that's, um, and it struck me as they also picked up a lot of boilerplate from many places to make it look good.
I love the be outdoors, open to the sky, that means all rooftops are open space?
Um, I have some friends in DC that spend a lot of time from co-op rooftop garden.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, they're very commonplace.
Yeah, but do we, as a town, want that counted towards an open space dedication?
I, I wouldn't think so. That was my, my real concern with referring this as to open space. You know, as people would cross, cross over and say, well, over here it counts as open space, so we can, we should be able to do it here.
Although if someone were to put in a green roof, right, with, with a sitting area, you know, there is potential to, to actually do some things with the roofs.
But I don't think that should be counted towards the community's open space.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we want, I, I can't foresee that density in Washington DC to be, you know, desirable yet Mansfield. So I simply want to recommend the change in the title in this section.
And, and a consistent change in the description as well. A 15 by 15 foot square doesn't really do much for anybody.
Yeah.
That's, that's, maybe that's, if you put a fireplug in the middle of it, maybe that's the place where you take your dog to turn up.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm muted.
Yeah, that's, I was thinking some large dogs wouldn't even, would need more space.
And maybe they should have some examples of what they see as, as this open space just the same as they have these other examples for interpretation.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And, you know, some of the amenities like volleyball courts or, or some of the stuff that we've seen proposed across the street might count. But they need to, they need to be much more specific about what it would look like. Or could look like.
How does our plan of development define open space?
We definitely, we definitely have a, I know we have a definition of it.
And perhaps.
My other office, I can pull it up.
Perhaps that should forbid them from using the term open space there.
Yeah. I, I think that this is not open, I, I think it's, that's a really good point in that this is just, and I think that's why I was struggling with this also when I was explaining it to them, that this is just so far from what we consider open space here in Mansfield. Open space, let's see, I'll pull that up. Open space is public or private property that is undeveloped or lightly developed with few or no structures.
That gets me, the roof garden.
At, at, at least with the roof gardens, they're, they're eliminating the air conditioning and systems and stuff on the roof. That, that's not open space, just the rest of it. Yeah, no, we just have to have them remove that term open space.
Yeah, I think that's a very, just, it's, and it's fine, it's just because what we're talking about are kind of two different things.
Yeah, and, and don't, don't let them count that towards an open space allotment.
And I think, I think especially with the, the fact that they've got this 50-foot wide buffer against residential properties.
Yep.
They'll make that 15% between that and the interior wetlands.
Right. I mean, especially the particular site, you know, one of the sites, this, this is designated for, but, well, two of the sites in Four Corners have a lot of wetlands.
But, but you know, 50 feet from a residential building, I don't even call that a buffer. And that, that's letting people look into your bedroom practically.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially if you can have essentially a two-story building with a 50% shed dormer.
Yeah, the, the transition, I would see the transition to the residential areas as being very abrupt, shall we say? The other, the other thing that got me was there was nothing about creating connections. To, you know, things that talked about internal, but connections to destinations and resources off the property. You know, the pick on the people at Four Corners, couple of them that up by Timber Drive, nothing about providing a way to the Four Corners bus stops. Or the few retail stores that are there. Jennifer, should we write up something formal?
Yes, you should. And I should, I can include that in the public, in the public hearing.
Yeah.
When is the hearing?
The hearing is Tuesday.
Yeah. That's why talking about, talking about it, we came to conclusion that the special meeting was probably a good idea. But then I just write something as a personal response.
Okay, but now you'll write it as from this committee.
Well, it will be part of the minutes.
Yeah.
So I'm basically gonna say you need to call it something other than open space, and it needs to have some sort of a common use. And preferably have, be permeable to infiltration. Consider examples. And look at what, what's the zone that has community amenities mentioned?
Well, look, look to the, you know, like say the PB three, which is where, what the standard at Four Corners is in, or the DMR. And the requirements to PB three is Four Corners. And the DMR is, for example, where the DMR can be applied anywhere, but like the golf course property, that has been rezoned DMR, designed multifamily residential.
Okay, so, so I'll, I'll point them to, to, to that as an example of the type of amenities we're thinking of.
Yep.
And how does this zone change compare with the DMR?
It's, it's very different because of the how they're using these form-based elements. So it's, it's, it could be similar, right, but they're, they're looking at things like the amount of windows, how close to the street, how many trees. We don't really get into that so much in the other zones.
Yeah. Would it, would it be simple administratively just to make it all a DMR?
No.
Yeah.
How, just from a perspective of the street appearance, is this gonna result in a more urban-looking street than our existing zonings?
That this, so the intent, the intent of this is that along this, this will be direct, I mean, one of the, one of the properties that is in this designation, in the future land use map, is the property across from the standard at Four Corners. It's the property immediately west of Timber Drive. So, and that will be basically across from the standard. So at the, and then you're let me just pull up the aerial photo, because, because you can sort of see.
But it strikes me as though this is gonna be looking more built up and more like store center than the developments that are across the street.
I, I don't think that, I, I don't, I mean, the developments across the street are pretty, pretty tall and pretty Yeah. They're, they're pretty dense.
Yeah, but they don't, they don't, they aren't as proximate to the street.
Yeah, that you're right, they're, they are setback. So add that as a comment then.
And Ken, one other thing on that list, and this was your comment, you had said that the, this community open space should not count toward the fifteen percent open space.
I don't know, I don't know.
I mean, because remember, this is, this isn't designed to preserve. This is a different district, right? So that is just something to think about.
Okay.
I, I mean.
Thanks to that picture right there, Jennifer, it really shows how they're trying to sneak up on the backside of Timber Drive housing.
Well, the, the goal is to have, like, the areas of my, just lost my parcel lines, I don't know why, but so this, this zone per the P O C D can be applied in this parcel. I, I need to get my, oh, I need to get my parcel lines. Oh, that's why. Okay. This is one of the parcels right here, and then it could also be applied here. This one is open space, and then you have a, and the, and flood plain, and you, you have the huge wetland right here. So it's like this natural step down through a natural resource right here. But the, the goal, at least the goal that has been stated is that to create sort of more dense development here, right across the street from the standard at Four Corners, and then have smaller, more residential development where it's closer to a a single-family home on Timber Drive, so that you're not looking out your window and Timber Drive and seeing that, you know, the first building type. You're looking, you're more looking at that smaller or more middle residential building.
I think even that middle residential is gonna be pretty intrusive for at least those first three homes on Timber Drive.
Exactly what I was going to say.
Because they don't have much backyard.
Yeah, well.
And they were two acre lots there on Timber Drive.
It's, I don't think it's two acres, it's, it's like one acre, some of them.
So, so the, anything they put in this new area will be quite, quite close to those houses, the first three in particular.
Yeah.
Yeah, or the first four, I guess. And maybe, maybe the thing to do is, is they do have some sort of a number that, that is distance from an existing house.
Yeah.
And maybe that needs to be upped a little bit.
The question is, how, how much is reasonable? You know, for for work around the trail, it's two hundred feet. You know, it's.
But see, if, if you look at some of these, some of these that, like, when you get further into Timber Drive, those houses are pretty far from their back line. And, and the number wouldn't apply there. That wouldn't become constricting there. But it would provide additional protection for these first three houses. But I don't know what a reasonable number is, but I think, I think fifty feet plus ten feet more to the building is, is not enough.
Jennifer, could you just scroll down a tiny bit so we can see the scale bar?
Oh.
There, perfect.
Sorry.
No, no.
Can you see it now?
We're just, judge those, judge those first three houses as being one acre. And you'll see there's no way they can even build on that strip without imposing on them.
So that's, that's a hundred feet right there.
Uh huh. But the first three or less.
Yeah. It's like, that's like thirty-two, no, that's about six, that's sixty feet.
Jennifer, is the prime purpose of this amendment to develop this one piece of land, even though it's written in generalities?
Well, it's, the, these, these folks are interested in this one particular piece of property, but in, I mean, there will be the other layer, the other parcel that folks have talked about is this parcel right here that's immediately east of Cumberland Farms.
When you say folks have talked about.
Well, that, that, this could be applied, well, not folks have talked about, that's identified in the Plan of Conservation and Development. In the future land use map. This is, this is another one of those parcels.
But it's a different ownership.
Correct.
Okay, so that's where the big white house is, maybe?
Yeah. Sorry?
Where does it work for the the other parcels? And the other part of town?
The other parcel, so, meaning, how are they, well, plan, the PB three is, there's just these standards there, they have to meet certain setbacks, height requirements.
No, no, Jennifer, what I'm, what I'm saying is this is a proposed zoning change for every parcel that's been identified as a transition?
Yep, mixed-use transition. There are also some other, there are some other properties that have been identified as compact residential transition in the P O C D. This, this is not for that.
Okay, but, but I would think that, that every parcel owner of a parcel zoned as mixed-use transition should be an interested stakeholder and explicitly invited to comment.
Well, so the way it works.
This zone, this regulation will affect them, and they might, may not even know it.
Right, so that it has to be, they have to apply for this, so, and they would have to come in for a conceptual plan, but I, I have to look at the noticing requirements for that.
But, but see, this isn't, this isn't the, this isn't the single parcel conceptual plan. This is the rules that govern that conceptual plan.
Right, so it's, it's, it's called, it will be a floating zone where you'll have to, so you're gonna, and that's one of the nuances we've been working with them on, is that they're gonna, before that zone is applied, they're gonna have to come with some sort of mass, some sort of conceptual plan, and then apply to, then and then apply to, apply with that conceptual plan to, to, to plop that zone down on parcels, and there'll be criteria, and one of the criteria is that it's identified in the Plan of Conservation Development as, on the future land use map as mixed-center transitional.
Right, but I guess my point is, is that whatever your conceptual plan is for your parcel, this is the rule set that will apply to how those concepts are implemented.
If they, if they choose to apply it, they don't have to choose to apply it.
Well, what would they?
With their, with their same zoning, which is RER ninety.
So you could, you could, okay.
So it's not, it's not, it's not going into effect. It has to be applied with, there are certain, certain criteria that, for example, let me read them off to you. Okay. So they're, they'll, they have to follow this procedure to amend the zoning map. So right now, what you're doing is you're just creating this, this, these rules, and they haven't been applied to a map. So that you'll have to apply to put them on a specific parcel, if that makes sense.
But the only parcels that are eligible will be the ones identified as mixed-use transition?
Yeah, mixed-use transition in the P O C D.
And this, but this would be the only alternative to R ninety that would apply?
Well, or they can apply, they can apply for something else also.
So they could, could they, could they go for PB three?
They could, that's what, we had a pre-application with this applicant to see if they could add this particular parcel into the PB three, and that did not go over well with the Planning and Zoning Commission. That was a pre-application. They felt that that was too dense for that parcel, and for what was stated in the Plan of Conservation and Development.
I think this will be denser.
I, I, I know people are against spot zoning. This strikes me as being multiple spot zoning.
It's there, well, I'm, I'm learning a lot through this process, but there's new legislation that allows these, they're called special design districts, and there's new legislation that allows I, I mean, I guess you could say that DMR is also spot zoning, right? You have to meet certain requirements in the regulations to apply that design multifamily residential. So, so this is like a floating zone where you have to meet certain requirements, and everyone who meets those requirements is eligible to apply for this zoning designation. It doesn't mean that, that, that property that is east of Cumberland Farms, if this gets passed, will automatically need to be able to follow those rules. They're gonna have to come in and apply for that. It will be a zoning map change.
But, but once they get the zoning map change.
Yep.
These design standards bind what they can do.
Right. That one of the nuances we're talking about, which is why I sort of wanted to, I said, are we sure, are you sure you're ready to to have this go to the committees, because they're still kind of working through some of this stuff, but is to, you know, is this a special permit? Is this a site plan review? So are they, for example, are, what information about the specific site do we, are we gonna require from them to allow them to amend the zoning map? So that's sort of what we're talking about right now as to what, and, and they're gonna bring that up to the Planning and Zoning Commission to see what the Planning and Zoning Commission feels is appropriate on Tuesday.
These two four-corner lots that you've pointed out, the one by Timber Drive and the one east of CVS, they're currently, they're currently RER forty?
Um, let me, they, I believe so, let me just confirm.
I think you said ninety earlier.
So this is, yeah, this is R ninety, and then Plan Office One is the, it's the front, so it's a split zone. And so these, these two parcels here at the corner, as well as, I think that's Farina Realtors right here, is Plan Office One. And then I believe the same goes for this parcel east of Cumberland Farms. This is RER ninety.
But, but calling it transitional is actually allowing houses to become much closer to the neighbors than the RER setbacks, RER ninety setbacks.
Right, it is.
That's a lousy transition for the whole neighboring homeowners.
Good point.
I mean, they're calling it a transition when it's, it's going to make it a more abrupt transition than, than the RER ninety regulations would provide.
Well, and, and I guess they would argue that in the Plan of Conservation and Development, this is designated as mixed-use transitional. So when we went for this plant, when we looked at the Plan of Conservation Development, and we went and did that future land use map, people felt that this area was appropriate for mixed use, like, which is what the PB three is, but a lesser, in, in, not quite as dense. It's more of a transitional, so that you can transition into this Timber Drive neighborhood. And then, you know, down to RER ninety down here, further, further, I guess we're going west on one ninety-five.
Well, let me ask, what's, what is the side setback on RER ninety?
Well, it varies. I'd have to, I'm gonna have to look. I can look in the zoning regulations. It, it depends on if you have a subdivision with a building area envelope, or if you were pre that building area envelope designation, so.
Well, Timber Drive is free, most of the, but it neighboring property. Well, Timber Drive is free, most of the abutted neighboring properties are free, so, let's look at that.
Okay. It uses. Okay. Think we have a table, I hope. This is where we really need some new, okay. Eight. Hey.
Setback for emergency.
It's clear between us, so for the, from the residential zone. An all-new industrial and research buildings, um, so, lack coverage. Boy, we need a table. It, it varies so much, um. But I think it's, I, I don't know, I'm gonna have to look, I'm gonna have to talk with Jaleen about this. Street classification, highway.
Uh, what, go, go down one. Down one more. No, it's floor area, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's very confused, these regulations are extremely confusing, as I get more involved with them, we need to fix them. Well, I mean, I guess what would you like them, I, I mean, setback in the R?
That, that's got nothing.
If it's a transition, um, zone, um, the, um, the setback should be based on existing structures.
Well, you have to have, usually you have to have a greater setback when you're abutting of a, um, a more restrictive zone.
Well, I guess, I guess my question is, is, um, if you're, if you're in a R A R ninety zone, how close to the property line can you build your house?
Your house? That, that's, that's a question that varies by when it was, by, you know, when your house was built and it's, it takes a little bit of, um, let's see.
Yes, but if I'm building a house today, what's the setback?
It depends on the subdivision, it would be in your building, you have a development area envelope and a building area envelope. And sometimes you're pretty close to your, um, you know, basically if you're doing a cluster development, you know, look at some of the, you know, they're fairly close together.
Well, let me, let me try to phrase it differently.
Okay.
If I bought a house in Timberline when it was built.
Yep.
Knowing that the parcel behind me could be developed according to the same zoning regulations that my development was built to. How close to my rear lot line might I expect that a house could be present? And how different from that expectation is what's being proposed in this zone?
So I think that's the way to phrase the question and then we look, I can look into that, so i- if you're asking a question, right? I mean, what is the, what are their rear yard setbacks for in the R A R ninety zones? And how can they apply, be applied so that, so that it's consistent and people don't feel like they're living on top of the, the someone in an R ninety zone, which is what this is in, has a little bit of, has a buffer from the density. And that's basically what we're trying to achieve, right?
Yes, and how much does that, is that buffer compromised by having only fifty feet?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that when, it, when Timberline was built, there was an expectation of distance to other houses. Based on the regulations.
Yeah, and, and how much are we, how much are we compromising that, uh, that expectation with this zone change?
Right, well, it's a question to ask.
I'm trying, I'm trying to think, did we have zoning regulations, this was put in, what, about nineteen sixty-three or sixty?
Yeah, we had zoning regulations then.
Timber, if, if I remember, um, according to Byron, uh, Jane, that the, the side open spaces there was one of the first ones received. That open spaces with Timber Drive, basically behind the firehouse. So that means there was zoning at that time, Quentin.
Yeah, there was, if you look at. Nineteen sixty-eight, zoning was in, in the fifties.
We, we turned voted zoning in and then voted out.
Uh, well, these regulations have been in effect since nineteen fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine?
Yeah.
Thank you. A, a lease road was designed by our good friend, what's his name?
Was it Glasser?
Yeah, Glass, Joe Glasser, and basically zoning came in, suddenly got voted out, and that was when he filed his application for a bunch of one-acre lots, which was, would not have been allowed a few months later when zoning was voted back in.
Oh, interesting. All right, so what, what else do we need to, I think you may have an opportunity.
Yeah, my other concern was, um, no requirement for establishing connection to other things, all the paths were, um, you know, talked about internal things. And also I was wondering, do we want to be that detailed in trail construction? As they were in this.
Uh, I think the detail on trail construction, uh, is suited to the urban environment that they're creating.
Yeah, but the thought I'm having is, I'm, um, concepts, the how to do trails have evolved, shall we say, and do one of us being locked into something by regulation.
Well, it, it, this, it's a, it's a difficult thing, because, um, in, in my business, we used to specify a performance standard and then have guidance that said one way to meet the standard, but we could also approve alternate approaches, so maybe a performance standard would be a trail that can have two bicycles traveling in opposite directions, pass would be a performance standard, and the width would be, well, eight feet is one answer to that, but there may be others.
Yeah.
Curiosity question, this, this edges on, it ends up close to Cedar Swamp. Who, who owns Cedar Swamp and is, is it possible to have trails, uh, going around the edge?
See here, who owns Cedar Swamp?
Some of it, if I remember correctly, some of it is on this parcel and some of it is, uh, space set aside.
Set aside, meaning?
Yeah.
It's not town-owned or state-owned.
Yeah.
It's a there's an, oh, the parcel adjacent to that, um, place where there's nature's medicine is, is, is town-owned open space, but oh, here we go, who owns?
Owns Cedar Swamp.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think part of it is in this parcel.
Oh, it is, yep.
And part of it would be.
Daniel and Lawrence Becker from Wellington.
Yeah. Then what happened here is, um, with, when they built one ninety-five, they, um, they changed the drainage, um, and held most of the swamp. And, but now it's, it's, you know, over the past thirty years or so, it's been rejuvenating itself, if you would, as a cedar swamp.
I got lost in there as a kid picking blueberries. On the what, north end, there are a lot of blueberry bushes, uh, on the various.
Okay, so where are we, uh? I was trying to get home by five, but looks like that's not gonna happen.
Well, I, I think, I think Ken has enough to write up, he knows what we're thinking in terms of, and I'd like to congratulate or discongratulate, uh, Jennifer on her acting promotion. You're doing a good job, Jennifer.
Well, thank you.
Let's let her get.
Yep, for all three of your jobs.
Right.
So I'll, I'll move for adjournment.
Well, we, we, now, there is something else, there's the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which is another, um, item that I, I just included today, because it's, it's a work, it's a draft scope of work that we're, um, if you recall, we're gonna use ARPA money. We have a hundred fifty thousand dollars to spend on developing a master plan. And we're in the process of drafting the R F P, so there is a scope of services, so I think probably we've done enough for tonight, um, but if you have comments on that, it, and I uploaded the Word document that still has comments from me and Jay, and it's not, it's not there, but I wanted to let you know in general where we're going with it, and, um, if you have comments, I would, I would greatly appreciate them.
We, we have our normal, uh, July meeting.
Right, which is July nineteenth, um, and it, I'm not sure when it's gonna go, it may go out before then, I don't know. So I guess if you can look it over and, um, if you have any big things, let me know and we can convene a special meeting.
Okay, so that's in the, um, that's in the document, um, section of the town website.
No, that's, um, in your packet, in the, if you, you have to kind of refresh and go to the link, not the agenda, but the, the link, the top of the packet.
In today's, in today's version of our packet.
Yep, and I can, I am happy, if that is too difficult, I am happy to ma- to email it out to you, uh, it's no problem.
I think now knowing that we need to go to the link at the top, not the links in the agenda is important.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, see, now we have a, um, motion on the floor for adjournment.
Second.
Second, anyone opposed? Thank you and my severe apologies for her, um, not watching the clock closely enough.
Many thanks, Jennifer, for taking us through that. Would you all like me to, um, send you, um, a PDF of the, of the second version of the proposed changes, is, would that be helpful or do you want to just, okay?
Yeah, that would work.
I think now I know how to look and find the asterisk, I'm fine.
Did we get a second to my motion, Mr. Chairman? Jennifer, go home.
Don't forget to stop recording. Thank you.